Call this meeting to order of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the town of Silver City, New Mexico, on Tuesday, October the first, two thousand and twenty-four. If you would all be good enough to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and if I could ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Middlestaff?
Here.
Commissioner Bayless?
Here.
Commissioner Chidway?
Here.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Present. Okay, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Everyone have a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, any changes to the agenda? Would anyone care to make a motion?
I motion we approve the agenda as written.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Who's saying no? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting for September the third, two thousand and twenty-four. So everyone has a chance to read them. Any comments or changes?
No.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I will. Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on September third, two thousand and twenty-four.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Next item on the list is reports. Site Southwest Land Use Code and Housing Plan Update Presentation. So, oh, and by the way, welcome to the consultants, Carlos and Allison, and also to Councilor Ben Comer for being present. Thank you very much, and Priscilla Lucera from CAG too. Thank you. You have the floor.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Good evening. My name is Carlos Gomor. I'm with Site Southwest. I also have with me my colleague Allison. Before I turn it over to Allison, I just want to give a little bit of some background context. We are working on both the housing plan and land use code and zoning update. How that is going to work is that right now, we've been visiting and we've been trying to figure out some of the pulse of the town of Silver City, understanding some of the housing issues, understanding some of the zoning issues, understanding some of the built environment. This project has kind of two different parts to it. The first one is the housing plan. So for the housing plan, we're laying out data, we're trying to figure out again some of the housing context for the town, and then that will culminate in a series of recommendations around how housing can be addressed and achieved. That's both affordable housing side and kind of housing as an entire market, thinking about that comprehensively. That process will probably be over the next six months, maybe a year. The second part of this process that we're going to be starting at the same time is also updating the land use and zoning code. And so we've been going through the land use code, we've been looking at the recommendations from P and Z, and so as we're looking at the housing plan and some of the recommendations there, we'll be able to wrap in some of those recommendations and strategies and write that directly into the land use code. And that process, we're looking at probably taking around a year to a year and a half. Again, we'll probably be able to get a lot more of the general strategy out earlier, but it takes quite a while to figure out the legal language and work out all the details of that. Before I pass it off to Allison to go through some of the housing details and context, is there any questions on kind of the overall process, where we're coming from, who we are, any of that?
How many cities have you performed this function for?
Our company has performed the function for many dozens of cities. I myself, I've done a good handful of housing plans. The most recent one was Los Alamos County, but we're also working on housing incentives around northern New Mexico, southern New Mexico, and then we've been doing some land use code update stuff. And again, sometimes these wrap into different kinds of metropolitan redevelopment plans, affordable housing plans, corridor plans, community development plans, other things like that. So a lot of times those things have code elements. One that we've been working on that I think is somewhat applicable has been Ruidoso. So we've been working there on both some of the economic development, housing strategies they could work on, but also on updating some of the zoning code to make it work better for the community.
The parts of Ruidoso that are still there.
What's that?
Yeah, the parts of Ruidoso.
Yes.
The parts of Ruidoso that are still there after their big fire problems. It's bad.
Yeah, they've been doing a tremendous job at both keeping government running and working on the immediate emergency, and that's, yeah, huge goose to them for that.
Might I move at this point, or suggest someone moves for this segment of the agenda to suspend the rules to allow direct communication with the presenters rather than going through the chair as is frequently the custom?
So you want to motion? I'll motion to suspend the rules of Robert's Rules of Order so that we have a more informal meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any objections to suspending the rules for this segment of the agenda? Okay, in which case, those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those saying no, hearing none. For this segment, the Robert's Rules of Order are suspended to allow free flow discussion. Please continue.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm going to pass it off to my colleague Allison Long.
All right, so this is going to be a little different than the other sessions we've had in different meeting spaces. The way we're kind of just going to make it work for this platform is I'm kind of going to give a little bit of the housing talk. Carlos is going to come up and give a little bit of the land use talk, and then we'll open it up for conversation. But of course, if you have a question or a comment that's relevant to what you're seeing, definitely stop me as well. All right, so one way, one thing that we look into and that we want to provide some context for Silver City are just laying out some national housing trends that apply here as well. You know, I don't think it's going to come to any surprise that increased construction costs and supply chain issues have certainly become first and foremost since the pandemic. We hear about that all the time, that is happening everywhere, but definitely more so in rural places like, I'm sorry, did I say Ruidoso? Silver City. Same with skilled labor shortages, happening nationwide, but even more concentrated in an environment like here. Another concept that we talk a lot about in housing that maybe not everyone's familiar with is this idea of missing middle housing. So I'm going to go into what that is, but nationwide, this is still a trend. Most of the time, the reason it's missing is not that people don't want it or that developers don't want to build it, it's that actually layers and layers of land use code actually prohibit it today. Kind of along the lines of missing middle housing is just a lack of variety. You know, there's not as many options as what people want, and so an example of that could be, maybe people want three bedrooms, but that's kind of harder to find than maybe your typical two-bedroom apartment, things like that, intergenerational housing, smaller housing units. That type of variety is missing also nationwide. Similar to missing middle, it's not because people don't want it, a lot of times it's because it's inadvertently, accidentally been made illegal by land use codes over years and years of kind of cumulative changes and trends. At the city level, also, this is not unique to Silver City, New Mexico, around the country, there's just delays due to kind of complicated permitting processes at the city and the state level, delays everywhere. And so that leads to a lack of housing because it becomes more expensive to build because of those delays. Of course, there's also community opposition. A lot of times, people don't necessarily want something new, they're scared of change. That also leads to a lack of housing because it makes it more difficult for people to build, makes it more costly because of those delays, because of that opposition, there's some uncertainty around will it get approved, will it not? That's everywhere around the country, leading to a lack of housing. And then, of course, more recently, the last several years, high interest rates. That's kind of an obvious one, that is a nationwide trend. Another thing that will be important to keep top of mind in these housing conversations is how affordable housing was defined in the past. This is a little small, but previously, you know, maybe pre-housing crisis, we had a very narrow definition, like working definition of what was affordability. It was generally considered for maybe homeless populations or extremely low-income families. It was kind of like assistance for those folks were really restricted to rents or mortgages, and that was seen as a way to solve their problem, their lack of finances. And then the solutions used to be purely government subsidies. The problem was such that the government could solve it through regulation and subsidies. However, especially since the housing crisis, especially since the pandemic, we are seeing a need for that definition to become more broad because more and more people cannot afford housing, and there's a lack of it, and it's too expensive. And so today, when we use the term affordable housing, we are now talking about definitely, of course, those really low-income folks, but also moderate income. Middle-class families still can't afford the housing they want or need, and we're also thinking of affordability is not just housing, it's also a housing plus transportation cost. So an example of why that's important is, you know, it doesn't necessarily matter if you have cheap housing far away from where you work if you're still commuting an hour. So really, that affordability calculation now also includes transportation. So that's kind of a change in the way we're talking about affordability and the way it really plays out in real life. Kind of going down this chart, people need help with things other than rent and mortgages. The lack of affordability has led to them needing assistance with heating, cooling, maintenance, property taxes, and even those transportation costs. Everything has gotten more expensive, so just what is considered helping folks in the affordable housing realm now covers quite a variety of services. And then kind of the solutions have now moved outside of what government alone can do. We're looking at more systematic solutions. The example given here is a walkable urban neighborhood is providing an affordable lifestyle, but there's plenty of other examples as well. So the main thing to keep in mind is because of all of these crises that have compounded on each other, what we're looking at in an affordable housing plan has just gotten broader and broader as to who will benefit and what services kind of co-mingle. All right, I'm going to go over this term, missing middle housing, a little bit. What you see here is essentially a transect of different types of housing, starting with single-family housing on the left, which is our least dense housing, going to the right, ending with those mid-rise apartment buildings considered, you know, in this example, the densest end. Missing middle refers to these older housing types that used to be common. So actually, Silver City is a great example. Because Silver City is so old, you have examples of these from the before times, right? So before modern land use code and zoning, you have townhouses that touch, you have cottage courts, you have fourplexes, you have live-work units in your downtown, but today, those are considered missing in Silver City and around the country because they're no longer allowed to be built. And so this term, missing middle, is affecting the country, but it's also clearly affecting Silver City as well because this is that mid-range density that really blends well with neighborhoods. It doesn't take up, it's not just such a huge chunk of space as those really dense apartment buildings, but today, you can't build this any longer because of the way zoning and land use codes have been written over the years. And then another way I like to frame missing middle is housing for every phase of life. So another concern that we hear here and everywhere else is, well, maybe single-family worked really well for you at maybe the beginning when you had a young family, but as people's kids are moving out and they're wanting to downsize, there aren't any options. And so they're stuck in these big houses that quickly become not affordable due to all the costs of maintenance, and there's no way for them to shift. Similarly, apartments might be great, you know, as a young adult, but that's not what you want for a family. And so you can also think of these middle pieces as helping folks shift around the housing types they want throughout their life. They serve many purposes. All right, a few trends that taking place nationwide, but once again, felt very acutely in rural areas like Silver City. I will read the text because it's a little small, but basically, entry-level home construction collapsed after the Great Recession and never recovered. So previously, we were, the country was building a lot more starter homes, kind of those smaller single-family home units that were great to get your foot in the door and then maybe move up into, you know, bigger housing. As a country, we're just not building that anymore. And so you have this big jump in maybe like, I'm a great example, I can afford to rent an apartment, but I can no longer even afford thinking about a house as a millennial. And one reason is that we just don't have those smaller starter homes anymore. And here's a few quotes that have stood out to me nationwide. So fewer homes were built from 2010 to 2018 than any decade since the 1960s. So that means we're just seeing less and less construction nationwide. That's estimated to be 3.8 million housing units as of 2020. I think we now know that that's gotten worse since 2020. And then this graph on the right is actually just average rents have gone up since 2019, so that's kind of showing the effect of the pandemic, and it's just showing how all of these trends are culminating, they're playing into each other and making it worse. As there's no units, rents are going up, costs of housing are going up, and these are the trends nationwide that of course are also playing out on the smaller scale here. Really quickly, I think we kind of all know this intuitively, but even when adjusted for inflation, rent has increased four times since 1980. Even when adjusted for inflation, wages have only increased 3.6 times. So even without the housing crisis, just people's incomes also aren't keeping up with And then the sales price of homes nationwide has increased over 500% since 1980. So you can see in 1980, kind of your average single-family home, $64,000, in 2024, it's over $400,000. So it's truly, we are, the nation is in a crisis, cities everywhere are in a crisis because of all of these things. All right, I'm going to pause there. Any comments or questions before I kind of jump into what this looks like in Silver City?
I have a question. On affordability, you talk about mortgages and all that good stuff. Recently, the buyers have been placed in a situation where if a sale is conducted by a real estate associate broker, that is now the buyer paying a commission. Is that a factor that is going to make it even harder for buyers? I don't know that that can be rolled into the mortgage.
Oh, no. Do you have any comment? I thought.
Yeah, commissioners, I think anytime we're adding more costs, it's always adding more complications. I think that adding these specific costs, I mean, it's, again, it's a cost that's being added that could be a little bit more directly on the buyer versus the seller, and so I think that is another potential hurdle there. I would say that in the context of all the hurdles, you know, it's one of many things that we have to think about and, yeah, consider in that process. But I think to your question, yes, that is something that could be wrapped into affordable housing assistance and programs and financial programs like that.
Thank you.
Right, and I think just the general shortage of housing makes it a seller's market, it makes it a landlord's market, and so if those, if the housing costs come down, at least the commission cost would also go down, and there wouldn't be as much of a pressure to pass that on if there were just more units and more competition. Turn it up better? Okay. All right, so regional housing trends. I'm going to go through some census data, and what we have already heard, some of this isn't particularly accurate based on your knowledge of your community, and that's kind of why we're here, and that's kind of why we're rolling it out, so you guys can tell us that. But I'm going to go through kind of what your community is from census data perspective. All right, this chart is national, but basically it's showing rental vacancy rates and homeowner vacancy rates peaked in the, you know, the housing crisis, and ever since, they've been going down, and they've reached basically all-time lows by 2024 for homeowner vacancy and basically there for rental vacancy. But what's important is that gold highlighting, Silver City for rental vacancy is extremely, extremely low. So in our discussion earlier this week, we talked about, you know, five to six, like that US rental vacancy rate, that's pretty low. You know, that's considered, you know, normal, workable. 1.6 is fairly unheard of, essentially not workable. That basically means you just don't have a rental market, very, very low. Now, when it comes to those homeowner vacancy rates, 2% to 3% is considered pretty normal and healthy, so in terms of that, Silver City is looking a little more normal, but really that rental rate is something that we hear in your stories and we see in the data. All right, the reason I have these two charts, so on the left are household incomes. What is important to notice here is those first two segments, the dark blue and that next color for Silver City, so that's 48% of homes make less than $35,000, another 14% make less than $50,000. Put those two segments together, and Silver City has a much higher proportion of those low-income households than the county, than the state, and the US. So that's something to pay attention to. However, we see an inverse trend when we're looking at median home values. If you look on the far right, that dark red is homes valued 500,000 to a million, and then that light orange is over $1 million. Silver City has actually a higher percentage of those high-value homes than the US, the state, and Grant County. So you just see these two trends really divergent, right? You have lower-income households, but your housing stock has like a higher proportion that is high value. So you're just seeing this mismatch just from the jump if you're just kind of looking at your basic statistics. And then, no surprises to people who live here, but Silver City has a very old housing stock, right? This is an older city, but just as an example, even compared to the county, the state, there's just older housing here. And so that's something to be aware of, how your community will be struggling with different issues than other New Mexico communities. And then when we look at types of housing, Silver City is pretty normal in the sense that one-unit housing is the most common. That's the most common throughout the state and the country, but I think what's interesting to look at for that Silver City is that Silver City has much fewer apartments, attached apartments, much fewer duplexes. So that is getting at that missing middle, and you can see it showing up here in the data. Silver City does have some, you know, kind of a comparable mobile home percentage to the state, that's pretty normal, but then when you look at those bars in the middle, that's the multifamily housing, and Silver City has much less. All right, this is the last data slide, and the reason we wanted to show this, once again, I think it is a common narrative that we're hearing here. Silver City has a lot of vacant units, and what these bars are showing are, okay, but what's in those vacant units? What are the categories of vacant units you have? Are they for sale? Are they for rent? Are they sold, but they're just not occupied? Are they like seasonal or workforce housing? And then there's this category called other vacant. And what's important about this other vacant category, as defined by the census, A, it doesn't fit into these other categories that are kind of considered active vacant, right? There's going to be a purpose for that vacant unit. Other vacant includes housing that's in disrepair, basically beyond livability, and that's what is stark. And I think what we all know, right, about Silver City, no surprise there, but I think it's also important to look at that trend. So on the right side, you see how that percentage of those vacant units that aren't considered quote-unquote "active vacant" has gone up significantly over the last 10 years. Once again, I don't necessarily think that's anything surprising based on what we've heard, but as a community, it is starkly different, and that is something that makes the struggles in Silver City unique and different than perhaps other communities. And these are kind of those trends that we think are different here and that the plan should focus on, but we will have plenty of other discussions as well, not based on data. And so that's kind of the end of what we're seeing currently. This is going to be part of the housing assessment that is part of the New Mexico Finance Authority. Actually, yeah, that's the end. Do you guys want to talk about any of this before we jump into how this translates into land use code?
Yeah, I share your discomfort with the high number of vacant properties. Say that there should be some incentives to put them into the active status, incentives of some type, you know, tax breaks or grant monies or something to bring those back to life, because if you look around the town, there are a lot of properties that have a lot of personality. People from other towns have told me that, that the houses just are, they're just fun to look at because there's such a variety. So I'm hoping that maybe we can exploit that, but it's just kind of discouraging to see that much vacancy.
Yes, but I think what you're touching on is kind of the thing that I see, what's hopeful about Silver City is the parts of your town that people love are actually the housing that makes up this missing middle. And so your community is unique from newer communities, and that you actually have examples you can show people that are like, hey, there's a boarding house downtown, or there's a beloved, you know, Victorian boarding house, or, you know, historic home that is now what cities around the country are trying to build again, right? Your walkable downtown is missing middle, and so it's actually really nice to have that to point people to, to be like, oh, this is actually why people come visit us, let's do more of that. So there's also some really awesome things here too. But Carlos?
Yeah?
All right, I'm going to pass it to Carlos.
Thank you.
You can put her.
So commissioners, what we're also doing from the land use code perspective is we are trying to identify different areas that we can make the land use code work better. Within that process, we've not only reviewed some of the P and Z recommendations that you've already started to work on, that staff's already started to work on, but in our conversations with staff and in our conversations with the community, we have started to think a little bit more about, yeah, how can we get some of the missing middle a little bit more often? In general, how can we decrease and make development more cost-effective? Development of all types, but especially focusing on housing, and particularly more the cost-effective kinds of housing, whether that's, you know, low-income, affordable, moderate income, higher price, market rate, but getting a lot more of that kind of development moving along, and then redeveloping some of the existing parcels and properties that are, yeah, within the town. Something that we're broadly looking at is ADUs, allowing more residential within some of the commercial properties in a strategic way, having more design flexibility in how properties are built or maintained. properties are built or maintained. There's a lot of, a lot of different kinds of properties that have been developing over time, and so kind of respecting the context and the unique context that is Silver City, as opposed to outlining as prescriptive of a design code that exists right now. We've also talked about changing subdivision regulations, thinking more about parking lot design, streamlining approval and entitlement processes to make those a little bit more efficient by right. We have seen that there's been really good processes, really good staff, really good decisions in the past, but we wanna make sure that those are actually clear. Something that is a problem with a lot of land use codes, Silver City included, is having regulations that are hard to understand. And when you have to hire an attorney just to kind of understand, or to go to the town and try to chat with them about what you want, it creates a real barrier to entry, especially for the smaller mom-and-pops to be able to do what they want to be able to maintain their properties. So making those easy to understand is a huge priority for this process. Other things that are connected, but sometimes we can't put entirely into the land use code, we still have to evaluate some of this, is thinking about some of the code enforcement processes, and then also some of the infill and development incentives. So typically, there can be really good ways that cities can use both the carrot and the stick, both providing different kinds of incentives to invest in infrastructure, in making streamlined processes, and giving, whether it's density or design flexibility, just making the process easier for the things that you do want, and then making the process a little bit harder for the things that you don't want. So getting that into code and making that a little bit more clear and understandable are a lot of the things where we're starting to focus on getting. But I think a lot of that will be reducing some of the regulatory barriers. So again, for decades and decades, a lot of municipal code has made, has kind of increased the prohibitions, and made it a lot more complicated to get through the process and build and develop, things like housing, or small commercial economic development drivers, even some of the smaller industrial processes. And so the hope is that we can make that a little bit easier, and allow the town of Silver City to have a little bit more of that. Any questions or anything on the, some of the land use code process?
Just nomenclature aspect, infill means, for everybody here, infill means...
Uh, development that's happening in areas with existing development, existing utilities, a little bit more central to town as opposed to on the edge of town, development where development has already existed in the past, kind of thing.
I imagine we'll review the findings that are required for the various things we do. For example, variances with seven, conditional uses with four, dimensional adjustments for zone changes, one of seven. And when you look at some of those, I'm not sure they necessarily are up-to-date with the modern world, so I'm hoping we will review those, make them more understandable.
Yeah, Commissioners, you're absolutely correct. There's still a need to have review and responsible smart developments that happens, there's still a need to have that kind of review, but we do wanna make sure that review is focused on the things that actually need that, as opposed to kind of unnecessary review for the sake of review. It tends to be the case that jurisdictions in reviewing bodies and agencies can sometimes don't understand the cost of what regulations and review processes are, whereas developers are very, very sensitive to the cost of regulations and the cost of review. And so it's really balancing that. We're not trying to take away, you know, of course, all the power of the community, we're also not trying to give developers, you know, all the power in the world, we're not trying to take away either of those, just make sure that that's happening in a responsible way, and that the cost of review, the necessity of review, is actually getting good results as opposed to adding unnecessary costs, if that makes sense.
Yeah, they said several times yesterday that time is money, and because we don't have a building inspector, you have to send things to Las Cruces, and then you never see the person, he never sees you, and he may have requirements like, he wants a copy of your Drager's license, but he doesn't tell you that when you first apply, and he doesn't tell you that he needs a copy of your deed when you first apply. So, I think if we had, when you're talking about just those simple regulatory things, that you wouldn't think those would be hurdles, but those are just things I've encountered. So there are, there has to be a way to streamline that. If time is indeed money, then, you know, when you're sending papers back and forth, and sometimes the internet goes down, and sometimes the guy's on vacation, if we had something more in-house, if we had something here, maybe it might be a little less cumbersome, but that's just food for thought.
Absolutely.
But I have seen that that, that those delays are kind of bizarre in that they have a batch of requirements, but they don't tell you. And then you send it in, and they go, oh, you forgot this, well, you never told me I needed it. So, I think if there was somebody here, it might make that a little bit easy, and once again, if time is money, and you wanna make this process workable, maybe something as simple as having a satellite office here rather than Las Cruces.
I think you're absolutely correct, yeah. You know, we can't, we can't get too much into state requirements and regulations, but I think that's a perfect example. There's a lot of instances where you find a community, and they're adding a lot of cost, but not getting anything from that process. And so, so one example I bring up is like, one community would approve, would give an approval, but then would wait a month to two months to actually certify that approval, and it was because the writing wasn't prepared in advance, and so that's kind of an example of, you know, a one-month to two-month delay that doesn't get a better project, it just adds more time. And so we wanna make sure that any kind of regulations, any kind of review is actually getting a better product, actually getting a better result for the community, as opposed to just adding, you know, again, unnecessary inefficient time.
Any other questions? Do you have any other more information, data reports, before we move to community input? Director, perhaps?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been very helpful, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is community input, and I do hope that people will speak, and we'll do our best to engage you. Planning and zoning on our own, we did come up with a document which was based on community input at a couple of our meetings, but also on our own work, but that is a microcosm of the entire town, and we don't know if we're going in the right direction. And at this point, we haven't communicated with the town council, because they're the only ones who can approve changes to the land use code, or the new land use code. Public input is crucial. It's too late when the code's already written, and then people have come up with very valid complaints. Your input is listened to, and we very much appreciate it. So, do we have a list of people, Madam Director? Thank you, we have four people who have filled in the form here. I'd like to begin this by saying that we're not fire-breathing dragons, and we really do want to hear what you've got to say. The first person on the list is Joshua Burke. Did you wish to approach the podium and express your views?
Hi, I'm Josh, I'm a contractor, I've been a general contractor for about 20 years. I talked to Nick Prince a few times over the last month or so about some ideas that myself and some other contractors we've talked about and kind of thrown around. I'm a big fan of small homes and small home design, and I think there's a huge market for it in our area. There are some regulatory hurdles, I don't think it's that big of a deal. I think my biggest concern with small homes is the process of somebody trying to find an architect, get a drawing, and go through the permit process. As a general contractor, it's pretty simple from our end, once we're handed a set of plans, or a pretty good detailed drawing, we can take it from there. But for a competitive market and for competitive bids, I think the simplest way to address being able to speed that up is for the town itself to consider, and the county, to consider buying four or five house plans, and making those available to the general public. There's a lot of ways to go about that, but that can streamline things to allow people to walk in, pay their permit fee upfront, it would be a pre-permitted deal, they could prepay their permit, take their set of plans, get bids from multiple contractors and from material suppliers, which would probably be familiar with these plans, because once they've done a few of them, familiarity will come up. Prices should become a little bit easier, our material suppliers should kind of, depending on the types of buildings that we're designing, should try to streamline and gear toward providing those type of materials, and the labor should become simpler. Some of my friends and I have also expressed the desire to start a panel plant here in Silver City, to build SIPs panels of a style and type in order to facilitate building quickly. It's a different type of construction, most construction crews, it's not preferable, because it's so fast, you don't have a framing crew. It is a real great way to put up housing quickly, and it could be a local manufacturing plant that, you know, could provide quite a few jobs, and also streamline the process for us. I think that's all I've got as far as the housing. I guess, on the regulatory side, on the zoning, so many of our properties outside of town, things are zoned for 1,600 square feet or larger. I spent, I bought property last year, and it took me a while, I finally found some unregulated piece that's right along, up near Pinos Altos, that I could build a, you know, I built a 500-square-foot cabin. Most of the subdivisions around Silver City would not allow that, which is too bad, because I think there's, you know, I mean, there's ideas between density, and we don't, you know, wanna eat up a bunch of property with little houses, but that being said, there's more efficiency and less energy use, and better material use. I guess that's all I've got for you, if you've got questions for me.
Thank you. Josh, you mentioned maybe putting together a manufacturing plant that could, like a boxable kind of thing, what was the, what was the name of that, six-panel?
Well, so SIPs panels are structurally insulated panel, and those used to be manufactured down in Anamos, there was a plant down there that we had, and we were able to order from them, and I built several of those, it's a really good system. But a panel plant is not much different than, say, a trust plant, so we have trust plants in southern New Mexico or Las Cruces, and that's where most of our panelized construction comes from. If you asked Foxworth to build you a panelized house system, they probably could because of that trust plant, but those are all being delivered from out of town. I do believe that something like that could flourish here, it just kind of depends. Stuart Eggnall and I have been talking about a couple of different systems, so...
So it's panelized, that's the terminology?
So, if you're thinking of a smaller home, you know, 1,000 square feet, so yes, panelized, you'd basically be pre-framing the walls, so you'd be bringing pre-framed wall units and standing them on either a concrete slab or a framed floor system, just depending. So typically, you can stand a SIPs house, a relatively large one, in two days, and have a whole thing buttoned up and sealed in a week, ready for the trades to move through. It's a really fast construction method.
Well, thank you for filling that gap in, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I too.
Yes, thank you. You mentioned the pre-approved plans, and what planning and zoning has been doing for the last few months is collecting a lot of ideas, and we've grouped them into groups so that we can talk about them more quickly, but one of them here is exactly that, pre-approved casita plans by local architects impossible, but I noticed Albuquerque's does that, and I think Phoenix has tried to do it.
Yeah.
And I've been watching the problems Phoenix has been having also, so...
San Diego also has a pretty effective program, and it's more for this middle housing, more for duplexes and quadplexes and things like that.
That's good to know, thank you.
Yep.
The next person who signed is Phyllis McQuaid.
McQuaid, right. Yeah, Phyllis McQuaid. I'd just like to, I'd just like to put a pitch in for us senior citizens, I'm 78. I live at The Gardens on Pine Street, that is basically, it's a condo association. We have 28 units. All are condos, but some are rented by the owners. They are, they are all occupied at this time, the units, and my pitch is that we need more housing for the elderly. Now, the cost of our condos, even though condos sound expensive, the cost of the gardens is not as expensive as regular condos or big houses would be. We need more units for, for the senior citizens that are, you know, one level versus a couple levels, you're showing different kinds of housing, and more variety. All of ours are one level, and that's what, that's what's important, and I just want to press for more, for more of those units for, for the senior citizens, because there are a lot of us here, and we love Silver City, and we wanna stay here. So, that's my pitch, thank you.
I had a question about The Gardens.
Oh, sorry, question.
Sorry. I took, I took our consultants by...
Can you speak up, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I took the consultants by there today, because we knew, I knew how important that particular development was. Are they quadplexes? Are they attached to each other, are they detached?
Are they, I'm sorry...
Are they attached or detached? I'm just curious.
They are a combination.
Okay.
There's, there's some that are, that, well, the most would be a duplex with two. Now, I live in a single house, there's about four to five single homes there, detached.
And how big are those? How big are they?
Mine is the biggest, it's 1,900 square feet, so that's a good-sized home.
And do they have garages? I'm just curious, because I know a lot of people that are happy there, so I'm just curious.
Yes, they have garages, the detached homes have garages. Some of the smaller units have just a, an overhang, just a carport. And then we have the atrium area, which is very small units, and they are like one apartment next to another.
And when was this built, do you know?
I'm sorry?
When was it built?
The late 1980s.
Okay, and I want, I have at least one more question.
I was just thinking about the...
Are there maintenance fees that the whole, the whole of the development pays together?
The what?
The whole of the development, do you have like monthly maintenance fees? You know, for maintaining your automatic gate, or something like that?
We have, we have an HOA, which just, does include maintenance of the property and the outside, because it's condos, the outside of each of the facilities, of each of the homes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you very much, the next one would be Amanda Frost.
I've just signed in to give our consultants my email address, so I'm not interested.
Okay, thank you. Next one on the list would be Charlotte, whose name I have difficulty pronouncing.
Hi, Charlotte Lefkowitz Oberg, thank you for doing this. So I want to share a few thoughts tonight. I am the Executive Director of the Silver City Main Street Project, and also the parent of a family here in town, so I, I wear two hats here. I want to share that I strongly agree with the Commissioner who talked about addressing the seventy-five percent of vacant buildings that fall into the other vacant buildings category, and I apologize, I've been sick, but I really wanted to come tonight, so my voice is just a little faulty, so thank you. With Main Street, we often say and hear a saying that I really like, the greenest building is the building that is already built, so they are not only an eyesore that can hinder our communities and the feeling of comfort and safety within our communities, but they're also a unique opportunity that we have. Another thought I want to share is that we are projecting that the Sixth Street School will be closed, and I feel this is a unique opportunity for our community, and it could become a number of things, including condos, that would address the missing middle in our community. And, excuse me, as Phyllis just said, it could be an opportunity for more housing for elderly, which is something that I often, in my role, hear feedback about. And additionally, when you're considering housing and issues that impact our community around housing, I do hope that rentals are considered. We were contacted recently by a nurse practitioner who has been offered a job here in the area, but she was, this was all by messages, but she sounded quite frantic because she was having such a hard time finding a rental to move to the area, and as somebody who moved here getting close to two years ago, that was an issue for myself and my family as well. Those of us who have various kind of professional jobs, including the healthcare profession in the community, for the most part, we're not looking to move somewhere and buy immediately, so if we want to attract healthcare workers and other professions like that in our community, we need to make sure that rentals are available, and rentals that, that meet the standards of what somebody might be looking for moving from elsewhere in the community, I'm sorry, elsewhere in the country. So again, I want to say thank you very much for doing this, I really appreciate it, and I do hope that you will take those things into consideration as you review new codes being considered for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. So what's the name of your organization, Charlotte?
Hi, are you familiar with the Silver City Main Street Project?
Okay.
Yes, I'm with that, the Executive Director, thank you. Do you have any other questions?
I have a question, not about what you've just been talking about, but I just wanted to get a feel for it. We tend to think of houses, units, which are complete, in other words, with kitchens and bathrooms and things like that, is there any market for living facilities that have communal facilities, do you think?
Oh, that's a really good question, and I don't feel that I'm the best person to give you an answer on that as far as the different hats I wear in the community, but in my circles, no, I would wonder about an elderly community, and perhaps some other people in the community, but for myself, my income level, and my family's circumstances, we really want our own independent space. That's a wonderful question, I'd be curious to hear what other feedback you'd get on it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, incidentally, Charlotte, the superintendent.
Wait, wait, it's a bit more.
Oh, I'm sorry, the superintendent of schools was here talking about that, about vacating that school, so that is on the table.
Yeah.
Because he said he's been approached by groups that are thinking about doing that with that building, so.
Oh, that's.
Other people are thinking the same thing.
Wonderful to hear, I'd also love to see it be all artist work, live work spaces, I think, you know, wearing my Main Street hat, that would really be hugely beneficial to our downtown community, really nurturing the art scene, so thank you for having that on your minds.
Any other questions or comments? Well, first of all, let me thank Joshua, Phyllis, and Charlotte very much for being here and talking about these things, just not that you could read it, but this is a summary of the groups and problems we've been looking at, and what you're saying is consistent with some of the stuff we do have here. I would encourage anyone, since this is recorded, if you have suggestions, first of all, when we have P and C meetings, please feel free to come and talk at Public Input, because with the very first session we did with Public Input, which I think was in February, we had, what, forty or fifty suggestions?
Oh, yeah.
And that's how things can happen, we don't want to operate in isolation. Everything we've got in this book may or may not be practical, I don't know, but the stuff that comes from the public, we need a broader demographic for the ideas and suggestions, so please. Secondly, if you do have suggestions, you should feel very free to email them to either the Director or me, and my email is on the town's website, if you look at Commissions, you'll see, and Committees and Boards, Planning and Zoning, and it has my web, my email address there, and feel free to send me any suggestions you have. We have a document with short, quick suggestions, we have another document with emails, which I identify, which has ideas, and all of that will go into the mix. So thank you very much for coming this evening, and for people who are watching this on TV, please get involved. Talk to your town councilors as well, they're very open to feedback, and they're the ones who will finally make the decisions on what's in the land use code. Does anyone, well, before we leave this agenda item, have any additional thoughts to say?
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I just wanted to express my optimism and pleasure at what I've seen the last couple of days, because you all haven't been at all the meetings, nor have we, but the meeting, the two I've been to, the diversity of our citizenry that came to these meetings, they were, they were very nicely attended by a diverse representation of our community, and everybody was so respectful and knowledgeable and sharing their perspective, and it's been, it's really given me hope that we can manage this situation together as a community, and I just wanted to say that.
You're here.
Thank you, yes, I'm very optimistic as well, and please get involved and keep involved. And as I say, every meeting we have, which is normally once a month, we have a Public Input section, and we do save all ideas, whether they're crazy or not, and we do have some crazy ones in here, because sometimes they trigger other ideas, so don't hesitate with the strange ideas.
Yes, no, I just wanted to kind of wrap it up a little bit from our perspective, I know this hasn't been a lot of necessarily hearing from us, but there are so much wisdom and knowledge in this community, thanks everyone for showing up. I just wanted to second what Susan said, what we have heard are a lot of good things, people understand the issues, and you're already kind of jumping ahead in the process in terms of just like getting it going, and that's really nice for us to come into, because you've already done some homework, your community already knows a lot, and so really, we're kind of just helping you put the pieces together, and so that's also really exciting for us. So thank you for having us, and for everyone else in the crowd or listening, this isn't the last time that we will be here, this isn't the last time we're going to be doing community input, and I think one thing to kind of think about is we will start having a little more specific sessions, so for, maybe for contractors, developers, or for Main Street, or kind of housing really, real specifics, and so those are kind of the things you can look forward to the next time we're out here. So thanks again for having us and showing us around, it's been, it's been a delight.
Thank you very much. In which case, moving on to the next agenda item, we back into Robert's rules of order. Public hearings, there are none, the next item on the list is new business, so this would be discussion on the land use and housing plan stakeholder input, if any commissioners have any comments they wish to make or perhaps ask of the consultants while we're here.
What's next? What happens next for us?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the next item that we'll start working on, so we're going to start working with staff on kind of the comments we've heard, figuring out how that fits into different kinds of trends, we'll continue doing some background research, data analysis, try to figure out some of the data that we were bringing up that some community members were a little bit skeptical about, but generally getting more of that data and foundation together, we'll use that, we'll get a context, a community context for the housing plan, start sharing that with staff, and then also start working on some of the proposed changes. With those proposed changes, we will likely start working with more technical stakeholders on some of the engineering, building, legal, and process changes that we could make, and then once we get some of those technical elements worked out, figure out what can we do from that technical perspective, that'll probably be a time that we'll come back and bring both some of the primary elements of the housing plan, and then proposals that we could actually change in the land use code back to the community and figuring out, you know, are we moving in the right direction, is it too far, not far enough, et cetera.
Thank you.
Next element then would be, any additional questions? Would be rescheduling the November regular meeting date, Director?
Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner, the regularly scheduled meeting is currently on Election Day for November, and we will have an application, so, so we, if we can organize a meeting date that would be available for you all, it'd be much appreciated, so our applicant has the timeline to follow with the legal notices and the posting of the signs and things like that, so I can adjust the timeline accordingly.
Are we allowed, are we allowed in here on that Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesdays is Election Day, but some.
Before, on Tuesday?
Yeah, but I think maybe we're not allowed in here on Monday, it's like busy and long around, I remember this like other years, I couldn't remember where.
I think what we did was we scheduled it for the next Tuesday, which would be a regularly scheduled council meeting.
Right.
So.
So that was a problem, so we usually have to shift the day of the week.
We've done it on Thursdays before, and we haven't had issues, or Friday, I'm not sure if they have anything, Anna. It's up to you all.
Whenever the buffet is open.
November seventh looks good for me.
I could do the seventh, yeah. I couldn't do the fourteenth, but I could do the seventh.
Which, the seventh looks for me.
Should be fine for me.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, I will look into the date with the Grant County Administration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is continued business, of which I believe this whole evening has met that requirement. If I could, I'd like to ask now, reports from staff.
I just want, thank you, Chairman, I just want to echo what Commissioner Middlestat said, I was really thankful for all the different individuals that showed up for our meetings, very thankful for their time, thankful for the Grant County Administration for allowing us to have a meeting here, as well as the Veterans Memorial Conference Center, and the New Mexico Council of Governments who supplied refreshments for the meetings over at the Veterans Memorial Conference Center, and I thank you all for your work during all of this, there's a lot of material for the consultants to look through, and I also want to thank the individuals who weren't able to make it to the meetings but did contact me and provided their input that way, so I also want to echo our Chairman stating that if anybody is interested in providing feedback, they can always reach out to the Community Development Department, to myself or our planning tech, Maria, and we will relay the information accordingly. Thank you.
Any questions for the Director?
Well, I want to echo what Commissioner Middlestat said, we've all had enough experience to know that a lot more is said than is done, so people have been talking about these issues for a long time, but we're lucky to have a Chairman and a staff member here, a leader, and they're taking the bull by the horns, and they're not just talking about it, they're actually doing something about it. And coming from another town, I see this as really wonderful government in action, this is what government should do, government has to do things that people can't do for themselves, and so this impetus is just great, and you two folks deserve all the thanks in the world for spearheading this, many people could, can sit back and wait for something to happen, but you're not letting that occur, so I'm just one person, but I think the whole community owes you a debt of gratitude, because you're spearheading this and making an impetus and pushing something forward, it's great, so thanks for doing that.
I do have a question. Are you, is there going to be somebody else that's, you've been doing this job, but this, usually there's somebody that does this for you.
Chairman, so, and Commissioner Middlestat, the update for the land use code is actually the job of the Community Development Director?
No, I just meant these regular meetings, the.
The Planning and Zoning Commission meetings?
Yeah.
So, yes, I'm acting as the Community Development Director, the planner and the mapper currently.
Right. I'm worried for you.
Thank you. At some point, hopefully, you know, if anybody's out there that's interested in working for city government, come, come on down, but as of right now, we did have a posting on a temp agency for, just to kind of make ends meet as an administrative assistant, unfortunately, there was not much action for that particular position, but I think in the future we're going to be looking for a planner once again.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I would like to add to that, by the way, I also have worked for the town, I was the Assistant to the Director of Public Works quite a long time ago, I was also the Town Clerk, and it is a fun town, it really is, and I'm very proud of the management that we have, and what I'm especially proud of is the Community Development Director, because how you put up with, first of all, me wandering in every other day, and everything else, and organizing these two days, I know is a phenomenal strain, I think also Maria is a great asset, and I'm sure you know that you're never allowed to go. We, I think we have very good rapport, and I'm also very proud, by the way, of our Commissioner, we have an individual with GIS and knowledge and understanding, we have an individual who's been on P and C in a different state, which is another perspective, and perspectives is what we need, and you've also been on other public bodies as well.
Yes, Fair Housing, but that's a long time ago.
And we have a civil engineer with a lot of experience, and we have an architect with a lot of experience, and my background is, I'm the janitor of the group, basically, but I do understand regulatory processes, so thank you very much for what you've done these last few days. So thank you very much for what you've done these last few days. Next item on the agenda then would be reports from the Commission. Commissioner Treadway.
Yes, I don't have anything to report tonight, but I would like to thank Jackie, you did a great job last night, and I'm sure the other two meetings that I was not able to attend. Thank you, consultants, for helping us out through this process. As somebody who's Silver City local and lived here 90% of my life, it's great to see things kind of changing. I've lived other places and have seen the city grow almost double the size in the time that I lived there, but here, I don't really see much changing, so it's great to have this project that we're working on and getting input from professionals as well as the community. So I want to thank you all for that.
Commissioner Middlestat?
Yeah, I want to thank you for putting together this sheet of materials, some of the stuff, and it was kind of stunning to me, the population drop, those high-end houses compared to the population in general, and there's a lot here to digest, but I certainly thank you for putting that together, because it certainly gives us things to ponder through, and they're all, all of us believe in multiple causalities, and so all this stuff, it all kind of coalesces, and I think it's going to help us make good decisions. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Middlestat?
I'd like to thank you for allowing me to guide our consultants today. I really enjoyed that perspective and learning from them. It's really nice to have housing experts to talk to about what we've observed, and as a former builder and regulator, it just was really nice to like sort of be in a situation working as a professional again and giving a tour, and I really enjoyed it. So thank you.
My report is, I did forgot to mention after the roll call, we did have an excused absence, and that individual, Commissioner, will be excused from the November meeting if it's round about the timing that he may be coming back. He's still in good service elsewhere right now, of a positive nature, but that was and is an excused absence. The second item is that we have a hearing in November. We will delay our roll plays, but we still, I want all the other commissioners to get the experience and the joy of managing a meeting, and we do it from calling a meeting to order to adjourning in a pseudo-session, so that you've gone through the whole process. And I've come up with a couple of interesting roll plays, since I've had the time to think of even more.
Oh, poor you.
And one of them is based on something that very nearly happened in our commission in the last five years, and it'll make you think and want to dig into this wonderful book called Robert's Rules of Order. So I look forward to that. But we won't do that when we have an actual, real hearing. It'll be a separate, regular meeting where we do it. And with that, I'd like to thank the commissioners for all the hard work you've done, because I know I'm a pain in the rear with updates to our document. You should all have your new handbook.
No, no, I was informed that we didn't know that it was ready, so...
Oh, I knew.
I didn't. How did I not know?
Terrapery works very well, sometimes.
Sometimes.
Note that I don't plan any changes on this until next year sometime. There will actually be two changes that I'm thinking of, to again, cut out an area where one could get into difficulties on the bylaws. Any final comments before we think about adjournment? No, no, no? In which case, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move that our commission adjourns.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Hearing none. You might be interested to know where in parliamentary rule...
He's giving us a heads up.
Wait, we're a chairman.
...for requiring a chair to get the no votes actually comes from the early 1600s, the Houses of Parliament in England. You can tell I don't have much of a life, thank you. Okay, we are hereby adjourned.